What do you have?
Here.
Alan.
Here.
John.
Here.
Tracy Ellen.
Here.
Doug.
Here.
Barbara.
Here.
Stephanie.
Here.
Joe.
Here.
And Al. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to advance notice of and to attend meetings of public bodies of which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the vision of this act, the Riverdale Regional Board of Education has caused notice this meeting to be publicized by having a daytime place thereof sent to the record, Ridgewood News and the Town News newspapers, the constituent borough courts and borough libraries, as well as posting in the school districts principals offices, faculty rooms, and board office. According to New Jersey Public Law 2001, Chapter 226, the smoking or use of any tobacco product is strictly prohibited anywhere in public school buildings or anywhere in school grounds, including but not limited to the parking lots, grassy areas, and athletic fields. Violators be subject to fine that to exceed $100. All rise for the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands against indivisible liberty and justice. Okay, I'll read the mission statement. The mission of Riverdale Regional School District is to provide a safe, student-centered environment in which each student is valued and respected, to challenge each student to reach his or her potential, to nurture every student's intellectual, social, physical, and emotional growth, to promote our healthy work ethic, a passion for learning, and a respect for oneself and others, to develop responsible citizens for our diverse community and an ever-changing world, to continue to involve our community in an active partnership, to provide all students the opportunity to achieve and exceed the New Jersey Student Learning Standards and the New Jersey Core Curriculum Content Standards. Yeah, I'm gonna switch things up a little bit here on the agenda because I see we have a large audience here that probably has a lot of questions. But we're gonna put the presentation, Patrick's presentation, for the Riverdale Opening and Restart Plan first, and maybe some of the questions will be answered by Patrick going first. So Patrick, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Well, it is a pleasure to see so many folks logging in to be part of the meeting. We have probably some of the best attendance than we've had when we have our in-person meetings. And I'm sure the biggest issue that's on people's mind is the reopening plan for the school district. So first off, I'm gonna put up a particular slide in a moment that talks about the schedule, which is, I think, the biggest issue. But the full plan is located on the district website. If you go to riverdale.org, and then you'll see a section on the website. I'm just gonna call it up so I say it exactly right. It's the first item on our district homepage, says Riverdale School Reopening Plan. If you click that link, you will see the first item is the District Reopening Plan. That's what I'm gonna speak about tonight, and then a whole series of other support documents that we considered as we were going through the process. So the entire plan is up there. For tonight, I'm going to ask Mark Walker, who's helping us with the meeting in a moment, to put up the other document. So, a little bit of background. The, as we all are aware, we had to switch to a process of virtual learning in the middle of March 2020. Subsequent to that move, we also ended up then at several different times during the course of the spring, had that process extended to the point then where ultimately the governor issued a directive to close schools for the remainder of the school year. Excuse me. I'm avoiding the whole issue regarding graduation and the other stuff. This is just talking about the process of school. On June 24th, I believe it was, the Department of Education, in conjunction with the Governor's Office, released a document called "The Road Back." It's also one of the documents on the website that we just talked about before. And that is subtitled "The Restart Plan for Education in New Jersey." That plan required districts to create a model where there would be an opportunity for in-person instruction. It also laid some parameters that we needed to consider, which included social distancing protocols as an example. What the district did is we formed a reopening committee, which met, I think, four or five times in the past month, which had a variety of different folks, stakeholders, et cetera, participating in it. And if you look at the plan, you'll see the people who are listed on there. And they assisted me in putting together the document. But the document, I want to be clear, is my recommendation to the Board of Education. So I don't, no one should be angry with anybody else that's on the committee if the plan doesn't meet the standard that you would have, because ultimately, it's my recommendation. So you just have to be angry with me. The plan follows the 10 critical areas that are outlined in the Road Back Program. However, what needs to be understood is that that Road Back Program also essentially created the all-virtual option. So at Riverdale, we've been looking at three distinct silos of students. The vast majority of students who don't require special services or additional supports and their participation in an in-person type of opportunity. Those students that receive special supports, and that ranges about 12% of our population, just to put a number on it, and how we could provide for their needs in the process, and then also have a silo related to virtual. Districts are to provide the plan 30 days, or have the plan sent down to Trenton for approval 30 days before school opens. School opens for us on September 1st, so we would hopefully be in a position where the Department of Ed provides approval of the document or the plan next week. However, I'm gonna just be blunt and honest about it. I don't think that that is likely for two reasons. The first reason is the Department of Education has indicated that they would be releasing a checklist document where we are supposed to compare our plan versus that checklist to make sure that it is compliant with the requirements of the Department of Education. As of my speaking right now, that checklist has not been released. Secondly, on Friday afternoon, just July 24th, three days ago, the department released supplemental guidance for an all-virtual option for students. So districts now have additional obligations in order to be able to comply with that aspect, which will include a survey of the entire school community to determine which students and which families may elect to stay virtual. And if they are virtual, how do they transition back to an in-person model if they choose to do so? So the process is ongoing, and I think everyone should understand that, and I'm not trying to be facetious here, I believe that the plan and the guidance is gonna change 25 times between now and when school in fact does open. We all have to be mindful of the fact that the public health crisis is still in effect. If we look at the news, we see the counts that keep showing up as to the expansion of the virus in a variety of different other locations. It is entirely possible that at some point in the next five weeks, six weeks, that the Governor's Office, the Department of Health, and the Department of Education may indicate that we do have to in fact close and stay closed and have just a virtual option. That is certainly a possibility. Another aspect of the possibility is to make sure that we do have enough staff who are not either medically compromised or have some other issues related to leaves of absence that would prevent us from being in a position to staff the schools. There is a mechanism in place where we are beginning to collect all of that information, and it will be collected over, unfortunately, the next couple of weeks. And again, I think it's entirely possible that this plan will change and be modified during that time. However, we do have to put a stake in the ground or a flag in the ground and provide some indication. So without me going through all of the different machinations of the of the document which you can review, I'd like Mark Walker to put up on the screen our schedule. Okay, so this schedule is in the document, and it is a part of the document. I just had it extracted because I think this is probably the key focal point at this, at this moment. And we have to view this as the opportunity for the students that elect to come to school and those who will be here for, will be just wanting to join the in-person instruction. So this model calls for an A/B cohort of students. You can see under the first column on Monday, it's the letter A through the last name Lee is in the, is in the A cohort. In the B cohort, it's Lehman through Z. You will see that there's an opportunity here for in-person instruction for four periods during the course of each one of those days with a modified opportunity for virtual participation in the afternoon with a virtual day in the middle on Wednesday. And then those same cohorts would repeat on the other days for periods 5 through 8. You can see that there is a distinct band for faculty check-in and student check-in because the plan, the Department of Education's Road Back Plan, requires us to have screening procedures for those who enter the facility. So our plan, my recommendation, is that A, anyone who comes to school, whether they be a staff member, a visitor, or a student, must wear a face covering while they're in the building. As you know, all executive orders and all other things provide this caveat that said unless wearing a face mask is medically impossible for you, if a student or a faculty member or staff member has a medical condition that would prevent them from wearing a mask, I believe that they should and will participate in the virtual component. So if you're in the building, you're masked. In addition, we will have automatic temperature kiosks, which have been ordered and will be available so that every student, every faculty member, every visitor has a temperature screening on the way into the facility. Once they're in a facility, we hope that everyone stays in there, and there will be a limited way of ingress into the building. We will be designating doorways where people can come into school, which I know is going to be a cultural shift, especially at the high school, because not every door will be available for everybody to come into the building. Every door will still be available for people to get out in the case of an emergency, but to come in, we need to funnel people through the checkpoint areas. If a student, a staff faculty member or a staff or a visitor comes in and they are unable to pass our screening procedures, we will have two isolation areas in, we'll have, I shouldn't say it that way. We should, we will have isolation areas in each building where that person who is unable to pass the screening procedures can go until we can make arrangements for a student to be picked up and brought home, for a faculty member to leave, or for a visitor to be able to leave the facility. Once they're in the facility, they will then go to their first period, the students, and will participate in a in-person instruction while they're in the room. It is my anticipation as well that any of the students that are in the second cohort would also be participating live with the, with that class. So I'm oversimplifying it for the take of this discussion, but if you look at A and B, period 1, A through Lee would be in the room, Lehman through Z would be participating virtually in the same lesson at the same time, and that that would be reversed on the B day. And the same would be true for periods 5 through 8 on the other two days. That will require a tremendous amount of professional development for people and support for people, and I've been making some other recommendations to the board to provide that support. While we haven't actually sat down and coordinated each and every one of these things with the two elementary districts, our schedules are relatively the same for the upper grades, that there is an A/B cohort, a virtual day on Wednesday. The primary grades are different. It's a different animal. It's a different type of student, and they'll be treated differently. But for the most part, we should be in a position where if you have a child in grades 3 through 12, there should be some coordination for family schedules regarding the in-person instruction and the virtual instruction that takes place. The other essential items are listed in the document, and I think that at this point, we could have any questions that may come. We're, we're going to, Mark will get on in a moment and tell you how to participate, just so that there is an order to it, so that we can get to any questioning.
If you wish to ask a question, please click on the raise your hand icon, and we will call you by name. Alrighty?
Yeah, I would like to first add one thing before we get started. As per policy, we'd like to limit everybody to three minutes to ask your question or make your point, because we do have a lot of people online. Thank you.
And, and please understand, if you got, you should identify yourself when you are coming on, because we all can't see, have everybody up here on it. If you're, if you're not a resident, because you may be a faculty member, just say that it's a faculty member. If you're a resident, you should identify where you're, where you're at.
Any questions? Please hit the raise your hand button. Thank you.
Hal, can we ask questions now, or you want to wait for the public to be done?
Let's give the public a chance, Stephanie, please.
I have a question. I don't see raise your hand button, so may I ask?
State your name and ask away.
Yes, my name is Alex Zamski. I'm father of one of the students in middle school. And my question is, all days, like Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, school starts at 8:00 to 5:00. Wednesday, for whatever reason, starts at 8:40. Could you explain the delay on Wednesday?
It's, yeah, it's very simple. It's just that we don't have the same check-in procedures because it's a virtual day, and we tried to make sure that every period would meet on the virtual day.
Yeah, but extending the day will not make it smaller. Basically, on, on the virtual day, class becomes 35 minutes.
Right, class becomes 35 minutes, but every period meets. So it'll be just part of the lesson planning that goes into the process.
You are muted. Unmute yourself, please.
I don't probably, I don't understand concept of every period meets. So if you start at 8:00 to 5:00, generally, what does it mean, period meets?
You, you can see that on Monday, only periods 1 through 4 meet. On Tuesday, only periods 1 through 4 meet. On Wednesday, periods 1 through 8 meet. On period, on Thursday, periods 5 through 8, and Friday, 5 through 8. So there are four periods meeting Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, but every period meets on Wednesday.
Okay, and if you make it start at 8:00 to 5:00, and periods will be 45 minutes, wouldn't you achieve exactly the same goal?
It's something that we can, can consider.
I appreciate this. Thank you very much.
You're most welcome.
Hi, Joan Kristin. I have a question about the teachers. Do you have a sense right now how many teachers will not be physically in the building because they are only going to be remote? And if you don't, when will you? And when will the parents know that their teacher will not be physically in the building? And will you be hiring subs to fill those spots?
Okay, so it's great questions. The, the first answer to your question is, there are, we, I have been in the process of conducting a series of surveys of the staff to determine those who might fall into a medical exemption and those who might have a childcare issue, which is protected by the Corona Cares Act. We are close to knowing the number that would be available for a medical exemption. We, I anticipate that at the end of next week, which I'll explain in a minute, we'll know more about the childcare issues. The reason it would be the end of next week is because all school districts are required to submit their plans by the 30 days prior to the beginning of school. Some districts, you know, start on different days, but everybody will probably be back close to the September 7th, which is our Labor Day. So districts are going to be releasing plans over the course of this week, and some have done it last week, et cetera. So not every person will know whether or not they have a childcare conflict until the end of next week. So then we will be collecting that information, and I would think that, forgive me, I just gotta look at my calendar to give you a specific answer. So I think we're looking at the week of August 10th to know what the extent of that process will be. And then based upon that, I'll be able to answer your other questions regarding how many exactly who will be there. Of course, we would never identify who would be, for what reason. We would just be indicating that class is taking place completely virtually or not. And I certainly think that that will have an impact on whether or not we're able to open schools appropriately, because to get substitutes for, for every one of those options is probably not fiscally viable for us. So we would be then in a position where we would be looking at, can we provide a virtual option for those staff members who are affected so that they can participate in their lessons on a virtual basis? And then we would have just coverage issues that we would have to deal with.
Hi, Liz Smerton. I just had a question. A lot of the reports have been saying that students should be staying with the same core group throughout the day, and the schedule seems that the students are moving through their periods. Will there, what, what will be in place for no passing of the illness from, you know, period to period, classroom to classroom?
Well, right, and I think that when some of the folks were talking about having the students stay in one location and have teachers move from one location to another, those folks clearly did not understand how a high school in particular works, because we have students that co-mingle regardless of their grade. You could have a class that has freshmen, sophomore, junior, and seniors in it. The more common issue there is sophomores, juniors, and seniors that could co-mix together. And they would have one period together, but the next period, they would have to shift in order to be able to go to their other classes. So we will be, we, the, each building has been assigned the opportunity to create a student flow process through the building. We will have to indicate, as you see in some stores, you know, which way that you're allowed to travel through the building. There'll be socially distant markers for people to follow, and everyone will, as again, still be required to wear a mask. So the answer is yes, there will be movement in the building. We, we hope to be able to do that in a socially distant way. I don't think it's reasonable for anybody to think that social distancing will be in place each and every moment of each and every day. We just have to look outside when we're driving around town or going from one place to another to see that it's not in existence now. We will do every opportunity we can to make sure that that happens, and it will be a learning process for our students.
Deb Newman, please.
Yeah, hi, I'm a parent of a rising senior. So I'm curious to piggyback on that. If you're, I understand you're doing 50% capacity in the building, but what say, what say the class itself? That doesn't like even out numbers-wise in a particular class? Or how will social distancing be enforced within the classroom?
Uh, it's great. As a part of the plan, it's a good question. As a part of the plan document, if you give me one second, I'll tell you what appendix to look at. What, what we did is we hired our architect of record to come and do an analysis of the building and an analysis of the classrooms to determine how many students we could put in and observe social distancing. And we had them look at it in a two-pronged approach. One is social distancing where the spaces, if you will, butt up against each other. The second is where we also create additional space between the, the, the social distance circles, shall we say. And that analysis is in Appendix 2 of that document so that you can see that we will be able to get between eight and 12 students in a classroom at a particular time. And that does not include those students that will go virtual. So there will be a diminution of the number of students that naturally are in the classroom because A, of the cohorts, and B, the number of students that go virtual. Where we have some issues because of class size, just it didn't fall correctly, if you will, we will be able to shift from room to room inside the facility so that we could put some classes in higher, in bigger spaces, et cetera, so that we can observe that social distancing.
Evie Bargiacci.
Hi, thank you so much. I have a comment and a question. I think it's critical for the I think it's critical for the students' benefits to have onsite full-time learning. And if we're going through this scheduling, why are we ending the day so early? Like, the last period is at twelve fifty. If we're going through all of this, why end the day early? And two, and the second question is, if we're doing all virtual, will all students and all teachers, must they be on all the time with their cameras on?
Okay, so it is my goal, I'm answering your questions in reverse. It is my goal that regardless if you're in-person or virtual, that lessons will be live. So that you are, everybody's in, everybody's on camera, everybody's on a livestream. Now, there are individual nuances to how that work. This is just an explanation so that we have an idea of what it is that we're looking for. The other part regarding the split is because there are, we, there is just no way that we have been able to identify a way to socially distance with everyone, every student in the building all the time. And that's certainly critical at lunchtime, particularly at the high school. So our physical facility just does not allow us to have that many students and faculty members in the building to allow all day long, full-time instruction.
Vicky Bowman. Vicky, just unmute yourself, please.
Hi, good evening. I'd like to go back to the teacher attendance situation, primarily those with younger students of their own. My concern, and it's kind of a bi, two-part question. I don't understand, if these teachers aren't able to return to school, but will remain as teachers, what happens to their in-person classes? Who's going to be in the classroom with the children if they cannot return to work? And my, my other concern is if they are going to be at home with young children, supervising the young children, what quality of education are our students going to be getting from those teachers?
Okay, so in your case, I'll go question one to the other. So if we have a situation, and I say if, because we're still in the process of collecting the data to be able to make this decision, if we have a situation where there are students in person in the room, and a teacher is teaching remotely, we will have to provide an adult supervisor in that space. There will have to be someone there. We just, you know, we, students cannot be left alone in the classroom. And that will be up to our responsibility to schedule that.
I have a little bit of an issue with that. We will be sending our children, if we choose, into the classroom to be educated. And they are going to be receiving their instruction from somebody virtually? Am I understanding that correctly?
That's a possibility, sure.
I'm not sure how the community is going to feel about that.
Well, regardless of how the community will feel about it, we have to comply with the three laws that govern this opportunity. That's the Americans with Disabilities Act, the Federal Family Leave Act, and the Corona Cares Act. They provide opportunities for all employers that we have to abide by. So as I said, we're still in the process of collecting the data to see if that happens. Just like on a regular day, if there's a substitute because a teacher's absent, we have a substitute in the room to be able to provide the supervision. We will still have to do that, but if a teacher's teaching from home, they'll be able to teach it virtually. As far as how our students are going to be, how our staff are going to be, I have complete confidence in our teaching staff that they will continue to devote their time and expertise to providing a quality level of instruction, whether they're home and have little ones, or have home because they're caring for another person who's ill. I believe our staff members will live up to their responsibilities, and I have complete confidence that they'll be able to do that.
I'd like, I'd like to, part of my job is administering the Family First Corona Act as well as family leave. Unless it's different for teachers, my understanding are those are paid leaves of absences. So I don't see, I don't see how, trying to word this. If they're actively working, they're not on leave. They're considered employed. So I'm not understanding.
So if a person is, so if a person needs to be out of the facility, but is still able to work in a virtual environment, they will have the ability to do that. So we, just as we did last year during the springtime where all teachers were remote, they'll have that same opportunity here.
Right, so that's different than the two acts we were just speaking about.
They impact it. We have to survey the staff to determine who that is. And we have to provide reasonable accommodations. You are correct that one of those reasonable accommodations is a paid leave of absence at a reduced salary. One of the accommodations is also if they have the ability to work from home, that you can allow that to happen. So we need to determine if that is in fact the case.
Okay. I beg to differ, but okay. I'm gonna go read up on that act again, because like I said, I'm extremely familiar with it. And I feel that those acts are in place to take, are in place to help those who are unable to work. I believe as a working person, you are considered employed, and you're not, you're not being paid through those two acts that we were just speaking about.
Hey, Mark, you want to get somebody else here now? Yes, Julia Kay, please. Unmute yourself.
Hi, Julia Kucharsky. I have a rising senior. First of all, thank you to all who participated in the committee and put your heads together to devise a plan. I'm sure it's not easy, and there's no one-size-fits-all here for any district. My question was answered partially before by Dr. Fletcher. You mentioned while students are in the cohort on their virtual portion of the class, you expect that the teachers will be broadcast or streamed, I'm assuming through Microsoft Teams. Is that correct?
The Teams is certain something that we have at this point. We are still also examining other options so that we can provide for, you know, FaceTime for all the individuals that want to participate. But Teams is what we have right now, yes.
Okay. My second part to that question is, will parents be provided a permission for their students? As we are, you know, moving into this virtual world and full transparency in teaching, when, you know, where teachers are broadcast and now students are broadcast, will there be an issue, or has the board thought of permission forms for the, for the students to be virtual?
Permission forms?
I mean, because the teachers will be broadcast, but as will the cohort that's sitting in the class with them. So is there any, are there any permissions needed there for students to be, you know, broadcast?
Yeah.
Portion of the class, but it's still a virtual.
I understand now. I didn't understand before. I understand now. I, I do, in, in all of the readings that I've seen on these issues, I do not see that, that there is a requirement for permission slips because the Department of Education and the Governor's Office is saying that they have to be permitted, permitted to participate in a fully virtual environment. So whether or not that would extend to making sure that their face could be shown to the other participants in the room, or we have a tool for our staff members to be able to monitor their individual student performance, I, I think it's something we probably have to consider, or keep considering. But I don't, my reading of this is that there is no need for permission to participate virtually as an item. So I think you're asking a question to dig down deeper, which I understand.
Right, yes. I'm just, you know, more globally for any concerns of any parents of younger students, et cetera. Thank you for the answer.
Joan Kristin.
Hi, I have two questions. One's a quickie. Will the ICS classes still have two teachers in the room when they are in the building? And the second question has to do with the teachers and teaching virtually, being live, I guess I should say, during the lessons. I know in other districts, there's some conflict with the teachers' union about not all of the teachers being on board with doing live lessons. Perceive any issues like that.
Right, so first question is, yes, we do not anticipate having a significant change in how the classes are manned or staffed, I should say, manned, could be viewed as a sexist comment, I apologize, how they're staffed. So we do anticipate that we will still have two staff members for the in-class support for the self-contained classes, et cetera. To your second question, as of right now, our, the working relationship that we have with our Teachers Association is a good one. It's a positive one. And I don't think that that will be an obstacle for us to work out the individual issues that will arise, and there will be issues that arise as we draw closer to an opening of school.
Mark, anybody else? I don't see anyone else. Anybody else have questions? Deb Newman.
Yes, hi, thank you again. A couple of quick questions. So three quick ones. So will there be areas for mask breaks if the kids just want to take it off for a few seconds, take breath? Will bathrooms be monitored? As we've all probably heard, there tends to be groups congregating in the bathrooms. And also maybe, I might have missed this earlier. I had to step out for a minute, but what is happening in the thirty-minute homeroom?
Okay. So will there be mask breaks? Yeah, we're gonna try to figure out a way to make sure that that occurs. Right now, we are, we have been operating our extended school year with students fully masked, and then we've had our athletic program where students are masked until they're activated, till they're actively involved in the physical part of their program. And we've been able to work in, if you will, mask breaks, forgive me for oversimplifying it. So yes, we need, we need to be able to understand how to do that as we keep moving on. But again, what we're going to be able to try to do, and unfortunately, we won't know the extent of it until we can collect all the data, is just how many students will actually be in the, in the room on a given time. I'm sorry, I forgot your second question.
Bathrooms being monitored?
Oh, yeah, thank you. As a part of the flow, the ingress and egress and the flow throughout the facilities, we are also trying to determine the best way for us to monitor students to come in and out of the bathrooms. Because we certainly can't operate the school where, where students are, or have the opportunity to wander and congregate. We're, we really have to encourage and find a mechanism to make sure that if we send a student to the restroom, that they go by themselves and then return. I do anticipate that we will have additional folks monitoring the hallways and having actual assignments during the in-person portion of the day to help with traffic flow and help monitor that. We also, our custodial, excuse me, crew, and that's also one of the appendices that's in the appendixes that's in the document, have a cleaning protocol to enhance, to make sure that our bathrooms are kept even more clean than they already are. And again, I apologize, you asked the third question and I.
Homeroom.
Sorry, yeah. Earlier, but I missed, what's the thirty minutes of the homeroom?
No, no, that's a great question. We didn't address it earlier. Thank you for doing that. So understand that one of the issues that we're all dealing with is how to get the students into the facility. And we know right now that many students arrive two seconds before the bell rings. And they come running in, and parents are dropping them off on the oval, and seniors are driving in and running in at the last minute. Clearly, we have to have some kind of cultural adjustment to that because students will have to come through a checkpoint in order to get into the facility. So the homeroom is essentially designed as a place where if one student is a rule follower and arrives at, I'm looking at Monday, at eight oh five, and they pass through, we need to make sure that that student is supervised. But we also want to make sure that that student has access to some of the other support mechanisms that are available in the school, like the guidance office, like the student assistance counselor, like our other support counselors that are available. So that homeroom, we still have to work a little bit on how we're going to have the students flow from one to the other. But this is for the students that actually arrive on time, show up, and then we have to put them in a place where they're supervised and safe. That could be the period of first period. That could also be that they report the first period and then go to, as I said, another support counselor, something like that.
Debbie Bargiacci.
Hi there. Thanks again. So to get back to that longer day, did anybody consider about letting the kids in that period four to sit, remain where they are, and have a snack or a lunch, and where they are now, so there is no lunchroom? That way, that would allow to extend the day? Has that been considered?
We have, we did consider providing an opportunity for students to have lunch. But we are, I am, I am unable to say that we will be able to do that in a safe manner and maintain social distancing, simply because students need to take their mask off in order to eat. So while, while I do anticipate that there will be some opportunity where students are eating in the classroom at some point along the way, they'll have to be bringing, you know, a small snack or bought a water bottle from home. But our ability to serve lunch, we don't have it, and the ability to rely on every student to bring lunch every day is just not realistic for us.
Is there a ready for Andy?
Hi. I've, I've looked over the schedule, and I, I think it's workable. But my concern is that, you know, during the spring, I spent at least seventy hours a week working and I spent at least 70 hours a week working and planning and finding resources. And I noticed that you do have built in a 55-minute block for planning for the virtual and remote and all of that. Are there additional resources being considered or additional training and timing being considered? Because 70-plus hour weeks is not sustainable for, you know, a semester.
So the answer is yes, we are considering other supports that will be available. We have to provide additional professional development for staff to make sure that they are able to access and take advantage of all the tools that we have. And the, the, the goal of having a live participation of all the students in the lesson is precisely to avoid a teacher to have multiple opportunities to prepare for the same lesson. So in other words, if all students are participating, whether they're sitting in your classroom or participating from home, you have the ability to teach a lesson or a series of lessons in a flow and are only preparing for it in one way. Because we did recognize, and I do recognize, the additional requirements that were placed on folks to go all remote as quickly as we did.
Nikki Bowman?
Hi, I'm back. I just have one other question that I did mean to bring up in my prior conversation. What about the ventilation in the classrooms? From what I understand, that is a concern.
So the, our understanding of the issues related to ventilation is including appropriate and proper filters in the units. I'm, I am aware from various news programs of this whole discussion about wall unit air conditioners versus, you know, big units that are on the roof. Anyplace that we have air conditioning, except our large group instruction areas in the auditorium, the library, gymnasium, those are rooftop units. Everything else is individual classrooms. And our maintenance department is aware of and installing the appropriate types of filters to allow the best opportunity for the ventilation to work correctly.
Now, that would be, as well as when it came to turning on the heating systems? Because they will run through the same, I guess, ductwork? Is that the right word?
Well, not really. It's only the large group areas have that. All individual classrooms operate under what's called a unit ventilator system, where there's a ventilator that's in the room itself, and we have to comply with air exchange between them. So while the heat source may be the same, the air supply is by individual room, except, as I said, in those very large construction areas where there are rooftop units.
Oh, okay. Okay, I think that's probably one of the top, one of your problems that you're dealing with. I can't imagine what it's like trying to put this whole thing together.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Debbie Barciachi?
Hi, hi, it's me again. Okay, so with, with this schedule, if there was 100%, if all the parents 100% were willing to send their kids onsite and the teachers were on board with it, would it, would this schedule go away? Would it be 100% onsite?
In all honesty, Mrs. Barciachi, I only see that that occurs, and this is my personal opinion, I only see that occurs when there is actually either a verified, bona fide treatment program available for use if someone becomes infected, or if there's a vaccine that's developed. I believe that we are going to be in this kind of quasi-normal, new normal, whatever we want to call it, for quite some time. So...
And my, I'm sorry, and so with this shortened day, how in the world are the kids and the teachers expected to, to complete the curriculum? Like what in place? Will there be more homework? Or is the, is the curriculum, the requirements, lessened this year?
We are still required to provide for the student learning standards that New Jersey Department of Education and Board of Education have approved. What I honestly think will happen is that there will be less depth in our ability to explore individual subject areas, but that we will be able to address a broader amount of subject areas with, with, by going through the, through the curriculum. Do I believe, as I said at the beginning, that this is a perfect model? I do not. I believe that the best way to educate students is to have one teacher in a, or multiple teachers in a classroom with students so that relationships can be built and there can be an opportunity to keep providing support for one another without barriers, without fear. And I do not see that happening for some period of time. I have, don't crystal ball, I can't tell you when it will be over, but I certainly think the development of a vaccine will be a major step in that direction.
And if there is no vaccine?
I'm just trying to answer your question with my personal opinion. I don't, I don't know what will happen after that. I don't know how long we'll be able to sustain it. I don't know what our leadership is going to tell us to do. I can only tell you what they've told us to do to date. And I've tried to provide you, not you yourself, but everybody, the royal you, with all of the same information that I have, which is up on the website, that, that, our district website. And I, I know you all appreciate the complexity of the matter. I know you all appreciate that, that no one is happy, including myself, at the end of the day.
Okay, we have one written question. And let me get to that in one moment. And it's from Rita. And the question is, is there an opportunity for in-person extra help during a designated time, given the limited person class time? Certainly by appointment, social distancing can be maintained.
Oh, yeah, I, I believe that as the day and the schedule goes, works on, and that we become familiar with the process, I can easily see that there will be opportunities because instruction may not go for the whole 60 minutes, that there be a period or a portion of time devoted to individual opportunities while you're in person in the class. I also believe that there will be some times during the extra help period where, where staff members and students will agree to meet in a certain area at a certain time in order to provide that. I, I also think that there will be a better opportunity for staff members and students to have an exchange virtually, but one that is, if you will, focused on what the student needs are. And I think we're just going to get better and better at that as we go along.
Looks like there's no more comments.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Thank you, Public, for, for all your questions.
There's one more question, I'm sorry. It just popped up, and it's, my daughter wants to know, will seniors be permitted to leave if they have study hall?
So the answer to that is yes and no. And what I mean by that is this. If you have first period where you do not have a class and you have study hall, there will be a mechanism for you to report in at a later time. If you have fourth period, which is your study hall, there will be a mechanism for you to leave the facility. If you have study hall during period two and three, you will be required to remain in the building because the opportunity for us to then recheck everyone with unfettered flow in and out of the building is extremely limited. So there will be some opportunity for that, but there will be some opportunity where seniors are not permitted to leave once they're in the facility.
Okay, that's it, Mark?
That is it.
Okay, thank you. We're going to move along on to the reports, President's Report. I really just have two quick items, the superintendent evaluation. I believe everybody has completed, there might be one person. Just get that done by the end of the week if you could, because the deadline was extended to the end of the month. Let's get that completed so we can move on. And also, the month of August, we did not have a scheduled board meeting, but we did meet and we determined that August 17th is going to be the next Board of Education meeting. So just make sure that's on your schedule. That's all I have for tonight, so Patrick, I'll pass it on to you if you have anything further to add.
I do not.
Okay, great. Committee reports, assuming that none of the committees met, but I'll just run through them real quick. If you have anything to comment on, please do. Budget and Finance, Alan?
No comment.
Okay, Campus Facilities, Doug?
Nothing new.
Okay. Community Relations and Technology, John?
Nothing new.
Curriculum, Stephanie?
No.
And Policy and Governance, Claudia?
Yes.
Oh, bingo.
Bingo, yes. Pat had sent us out several policies that we're working on right now. Some of them are related to opening up the building and preparing for COVID. We're still working on those, so it'll probably be presented in our August meeting.
There was a lot to digest and there were a lot of questions, so Patrick, we decided to put that off until the next meeting. Thanks, Claudia.
Sure.
Let's move on to the consent agenda. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
That's Claudia. Okay, thank you, Claudia. Second? Who was that?
Joe.
Joe, okay, thanks, Joe. Any questions or comments or concerns about the consent agenda, anybody?
Al, is the plan in the consent agenda or is it a separate item? Are we voting on the plan?
I don't know, Patrick, is...
It's a separate item. You should vote that separately.
I'll wait till we vote on it then.
Anybody else, any questions on consent? Okay, Tom, when you're ready?
Claudia?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tracy Allen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And Al?
Yes. Okay. Vote number one, under Roman numeral seven personnel, E, number one. This is Patrick's new contract. We rescinding the last year of his current contract and we put forward a new five-year deal for Patrick. So may I have a motion for Patrick's contract, please?
I'll move it, Stephanie.
I'll second it, Doug.
Do we have any questions or concerns about this issue? Okay, great. Tom, when you're ready?
Claudia?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes, thank you.
John?
Yes.
Tracy Allen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And Al?
Yes, and it's well deserved, thank you. Vote number two, Roman numeral nine miscellaneous. Number one, be resolved that the Board of Education has a payment of miracles for the school year of 2019, 2020 for the superintendent in a total of 21,616. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
Claudia?
I'll second it.
And that's Alan's second. Any questions? Tom, when you're ready, please.
Jay?
Claudia?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tracy Allen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And Al?
Yes. Okay, next on the agenda here is under Roman numeral 10, Finance and District Operation. Superintendent, at the request of Board Secretary, recommends that the Board accept line item transfers and the adjustments that's listed in the financial report for the month ending June 30th, 2020. May I have a motion, please?
I'll move.
Who was that?
Alan.
Alan, second?
I'll second it, it's Joe.
Thanks, Joe. Tom, when you're ready, please?
Claudia?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tracy Allen? Tracy Allen?
Yes, sorry.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And Al?
Yes. Also under Roman numeral 10, Finance and District Operation, the Board of Education is meeting in public session on July 27th, which is today. And whereas it will not meet again in public session until August 17th, 2020, business transactions must be necessarily be addressed during the hiatus and public sessions of the Board, including but not limited to the offering of contracts of employment and opening of bids. Now therefore be resolved that the Superintendent of Schools is authorized to offer contracts of employment on behalf of the Board and conduct all other necessary business transactions between July 27th, 2020, and August 17th, 2020, subject to the final approval of the Board. May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, it's Claudia.
I'll second that, Al, this is Joe.
Joe again, thank you, Joe. Tom, roll call, please.
Al?
Yeah.
Real quick, there's just a question on that one too. Since it's just a superintendent and it does say about paying bills, I'm assuming that it falls under the administrators too, like Tom, to be able to pay bills during this time period?
Well...
Yes.
I mean, it just says a superintendent.
No, we'll get to number 12, Joe.
Okay.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay.
Claudia?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tracy Allen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And Al?
Yes. Okay, the, the last vote on the agenda here is, is recommended by the superintendent that all items from the executive agenda dated July 27th, 2020 be approved. Let me just go over, I'll bullet point some of these items. If the public has any questions or concerns about any of this, there will be a, a time for you to comment on that. The first items covered are some overages for some of the teachers. Or the second items is the resignation of William Feldman, the Assistant Superintendent. Also a resignation of Building Service Employee, John DeMarkwell. The reappointment of Mark Wachter as the Assistant School Business Administrator. And then Lisa Torres moving... And then Lisa Torres moving up on the guide. She established doctorate in Educational Administration. Congratulations, Lisa. Under E Appointments, approve the appointment of Christina Bakachi. I'm sorry if I, as a speech language specialist. There's also Kristy Hoover as a teacher of special education. Approve the appointment of Danielle Kassen as Kason as Teacher of English. Angela Anacino as Teacher of Art. The appointment of Liz Effering as Executive Secretary. And Lisa Ring as Confidential Secretary. Or approve the appointment of Nancy Bakter as District Registrar. And let's see. Or approve the appointment of the following Riverdale staff. That's Fran Palaio as a nurse. And then Kyle Scanzarella as the Position of Head Ice Hockey Coach for 21 seasons.
And the job description.
Oh, yes. And last, the, just the job description. We're not hiring anyone at this point, but it's Supervisor of Professional Development and Special Projects. Should I also sue the restart program through this?
No, I would, may I recommend that you have a separate motion on that? Board members may have some questions now that they've heard the public.
Okay, very good. So let's just end it at the job, the new job description. Again, the title is going to be Supervisor of Professional Development and Special Projects. May I have a motion, please?
So move, Stephanie.
Second, Claudia.
Okay, do we have any questions on any of these items? I would think not, just this question, executive. Okay, Tom?
Claudia?
Yes.
Alan? We'll come back to you. John?
Yes.
Tracy Allen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And Al?
Okay, and the last vote, number six, will be on Patrick's presentation of the restart program. May I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the reopening plan.
I'll second it, Doug.
Joe? Sorry.
Joe and Doug, okay, I've got it. It's open to questions, folks?
So, it's Stephanie. I have a bunch of questions since I read the whole report. So some are, some are a little bit about the schedule and some are about other parts of the report. So one, we were talking about the bathroom and, you know, we've talked to, about the bathrooms in various forms over the years. And are we reconsidering the possibility of swipes as a way to monitor who's in, who's out? You know, we've talked about, you know, the kids all get IDs if we could make that a possibility. So I'm throwing it out there as one of the things to look at. We're talking about monitoring the bathroom. And the other is, you know, there are those touchless door openers that we could order for all of the students and staff for very small amount of what is our budget to increase the amount of safety when going in and out of things like the bathrooms and whatnot. So that's just, I don't know if the committee looked at that or not. But it talks about the school bus spraying and that they're using a substance that is good for up to 30 days. And so it states that it'll be sprayed once a month. Can it be sprayed more often? Like, can we, when we're contracting with a school bus, can we insist that they spray it every two weeks even though it says it has a, you know, a life of 30 days? That would be one of my questions. Another is you gave a list of all of the substances in the appendices that we're, that our staff is using to clean. I assume these are different than, Tom, than the substances we've used in the past?
Kind of similar, okay, but probably a little more intense.
Okay, so are we, so are we providing them with increased protection so that, you know, so that, you know, when they used to maybe use a rubber glove, are we giving them more heavy-duty gloves or something just to make, ensure their safety while they're ensuring everybody else's safety?
Absolutely.
Okay. There's no question. Great. This, I don't know if Tom or Pat, you'll know the answer to this, but the out-of-district special education placements, will those be in-person for those students? Or will those be virtual for those students?
Unfortunately, I don't have the answer to that question completely yet because not all schools have made their decision on how they're going to reopen. I can tell you that all approved public schools in the state of New Jersey have to follow the same rules. So I believe there will be some form of in-person instruction. I don't know the extent of it at this time because they haven't had the, they haven't had to communicate it to us yet. They will be over the next couple of weeks.
Okay. Have you gotten any guidance or maybe any of the staff gotten guidance from SUPA as it relates to their expectations, given that every school will be different? And, you know, their curriculum is pretty set? And have we gotten anything from them or no?
Yes. Off the top of my head, I don't have it here with me to be able to comment on to you what it is. However, Syracuse University that sponsors the program began to make a pivot regarding the virtual school year and the requirements for a limited opportunity to return to in-person instruction in the spring. And the training that our teachers had to go to over the course of the summer so far and what they will attend addresses that specifically on how they're adjusting their curriculum in order to make sure that that, there's still some fidelity and integrity to the program.
Okay. In looking at the schedule, the club time and the sport time overlap. Is there going to be some mechanism for students to be able to participate in both? Because many clubs ordinarily would maybe meet during a lunch period or something else. So, you know, it has it at the end of the day, clubs, co-curricular, excuse me, I apologize, co-curricular in sports. Are, is, are, are the athletic department going to be given a schedule, you know, where kids might be showing up 30 minutes late? Or how's that going to work?
Yes, there's going to be coordination through the co-curricular and the athletic program because once again, we're still operating in a socially distant world. We can't have all of the athletes reporting at the same time. The NJSIAA hasn't released their information on return to the full program yet. They will be putting Phase Two into effect. Actually, it started today, which is where you have more team-specific type drilling going on. But the return to full-on practices and schedules, they're still resolving that issue. And their practice is not supposed to start until September. So we have some opportunity to resolve that and make a better schedule for that as we go forward.
Okay, and just two more things. That section where you have, where it's extra help or, you know, and this will, again, evolve over time. You know, you can't know it going in. Will there be any possibility that maybe on certain days, not every day, but like at certain times, that maybe some science labs could be put in there? Ones that, you know, maybe you couldn't do in one period? Or the same thing for maybe some of the APs to have an extra meet? Because they, they're, they're not just getting all the information they have in all of the formats that we're providing. They, you know, they want to do a, you know, a throw-out quiz, you know, on terms or something like that. Will we be able to have some flexibility in there?
The answer is yes, we will. I can tell you that in addition to questions from staff members about the basic opportunities behind the plan, I am already receiving content-specific questions from staff members who are trying to address just precisely the types of opportunities that you described for science for all their content areas. So I fully expect that that's going to continue to evolve over the course of, of the implementation of this program. And I certainly think that if we are forced to go to all virtual, that that will become even a more realistic opportunity because we just won't be able to demonstrate all of the hands-on activities unless a student gets into a lab.
Yeah, and the other, like, addressing what Mrs. Ferandy was mentioning, Ms. Ferandy was mentioning earlier, might there be, and again, this would have to be in coordination with the staff being on board, but might there be departments that decide to designate people as the extra-help person on a rotating basis? So everybody who, all the teachers who teach Algebra I, they decided to rotate so that they can also, maybe the rest of them have some more planning that they can share? Will there be some flexibility in that for them as well?
Certainly on, on our behalf, meaning the administrators' behalf. And again, I want to, I said this earlier in answer to some other questions, but I want to compliment our staff for the manner in which they pivoted to virtual instruction in the springtime and the fact that they stayed with it during the whole springtime. And I can tell you that we did survey the staff after, pretty, pretty close to the, after the end of the school year. And there were some opportunities for open-ended questioning there. And many, many of the staff members said or had suggestions on how to improve the process. So again, I'm confident that our, our staff is going to continue to try to make this as good an experience as it can be for all. And they'll come up with some of these ideas.
Yeah, last comment. We just spoke for a few minutes earlier and I hope you don't mind me sharing with the rest of the group that I had asked Pat, you know, as far as added enhancements and for both the staff and the student body regarding the emotional wellness. Whether we've woven it into our curriculum or not, this has been an unprecedented time and people are dealing with things within their home, within their families, within the school. You know, some of this virtual and live streaming speaks to other people. For others, it's going to be, you know, just a constant source of that. So, you know, Pat, of course, did indicate that in addition to all the things that we try to do on a regular basis, that there will be increased efforts, both for, for the staff, for the staff to recognize things that might be going on in the students and for the students and their families to access opportunities should they feel overwhelmed or struggling or something more serious than that. Thanks, Pat, for answering my questions.
You're most welcome.
Does anybody else have any questions regarding the reopening program?
Pat, I have just like a few questions. It's actually one big question. So for like our music department, STEM, art, TV media, nutrition at the middle school, how are we seeing these classes take part? There's so much sharing of equipment in those classes, whether it be camera work or whether it be utensils, working with projects for STEM. How are we seeing these teachers, and art especially, how are we seeing these teachers do their job with these students when we're limited on sharing of utensils? We're limited on things. How, like, how are we working with these individual staff members?
A lot of those staff members that are involved are already providing some suggestions to us on how to accomplish that. The overarching goal would be that every student is supplied individually so that there is no opportunity for sharing. However, we know that that is going to be somewhat difficult, particularly in the area that you described about like TV media, because we just can't have, you know, that many cameras available for folks. So we're going to have to put in additional security, safety measures for that, including the disinfectant of equipment when it goes from one individual to another. But the staff members in our Related Arts Program for our Traditional Arts Program, our STEM Program, they're trying to evaluate projects that they can offer to students that we would be able to either provide, you know, a single-use supply. I'm oversimplifying the statement. Or a supply list that families will help, help provide so that we can produce the actual art activity. I will tell you that in particular, a lot of the, what we would traditionally call our art program, the staff member shifted to virtual art where students created art on computers and they made a very effective use of telephones, particularly where photography is built into the smartphone, where they had students exploit that ability and then manipulate it in a virtual format to create it. Some of the stuff that I saw was just great over the course of the, of the year. And I think, if you give me one second, I believe we still have our art show on the website. So on the main page of the website, five items down is our Senior Art Expo. So you can see in real time how some of the art students took care of, of their requirements and how our teachers assisted them and what the results were if you go to that link that's on the website.
Okay.
Any other questions regarding the restart program? No? Tom, when you're ready, please roll.
Claudia?
Yes, and thank you so much for all the effort that was put into this. It's not an easy task to accomplish.
Alan?
I'm here and I also want to thank you, Mr. Fletcher. I know there's, we're not going to be able to satisfy everybody. There's just too many moving parts and unfortunately, the parameters are constantly shifting and moving. But I think we're on the right track. Thank you.
Tracy Allen?
Yes, and also want to thank Patrick and the staff for the effort put into this document because we all know it is a fluid situation and it's most likely going to be asked to change at any given point. So thank you for your work up until this point.
Doug?
Yes, and also, Pat, thanks for all the time put in. And also, I also want to thank the other members, in particular parents and staff that had a lot of good insight into helping form the document.
Barbara?
Yes, and thank you very much for all the hard work.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Joe?
I'm going to say yes and thank you. Pat, you said 25 or changes. I'm going with the under. I'm hoping it's going to be under 25.
Al?
That's a yes for me. And did we go back to Alan? Did Alan cast his?
I'm going to go right now as soon as you're done.
Okay, no, I'm finishing. Of course, thank you very much, you know, for all the hard work.
Mr. Fackenson?
Yes, and thank you, Pat, and the committee for all your efforts. It's tough job, difficult.
Mr. Graff, if I could? Mr. Graff, if I could, just for one moment, I, I, I thank you all for the kind words. I do want to mention all the members of the committee who were part of this. The board members who were part of our program were Al Graff and Doug Cupfer. The other administrative representation was Brendan Flanagan and John Jazinski. The RDA leadership included Keir Halstetter and Ellen DeRosa Hill. The RDA membership included Pete LaBarbieri, LaBarbiera, sorry, Alex Saphos, Tom Nolan, Lucia Lauderhand. The parents were Yami Sanchez Nunes and Kristen Varrier. I had other resources that were part of this process but also met with me privately because we were focusing on some medical aspects and special needs requirements. That's Kathy Krieger, Fran Pulio, our nurse, Jim Cooney, our Director of Special Services, and Dr. Greg Varhol, who is our school physician. And then finally, there were five students that participated in this process. Stephanie Crassus, Ethan Cupfer, Darcy Byrne, Brendan Walker, and Noel Sarafian. And I didn't have to encourage them to speak all the time. But the students provided a great opportunity to see things from their perspective and I think it helped inform the plan. And the staff members, their generous giving of their time cannot be appreciated enough. So thank you all for your help and participation as we put this forward.
Okay, thank you. Let's move along to old business. I'll combine it with new business if anybody has anything.
Al, I received from somebody who I encouraged to send to the Riverdale BOE that so hopefully you'll get it, but on August 1st in Memorial Park in River Edge, there is a Teach in Black Lives Matter that's been organized. It's from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And they have the mayor from River Edge. They have a couple of faculty members from FDU, somebody from Montclair State, and then community members, which may include former or current students. So in case it does not come our way, I just wanted to let everyone know. It's August 1st. The rain date is August 8th, from 11:00 to 1:00, Memorial Park, River Edge.
That did in fact come through because I did see it today.
Okay, good. Thanks.
Got it. Anybody else? Old business, new business?
I just want to bring to your attention the list of the board requirements that I distributed with on informational purposes as to who has to take what this year. So if you had a chance to look it over, if it is inaccurate because school boards hasn't updated their listing, please let me know.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, we'll, we'll jump into public comments again on any, any issues. They don't have to be related to the agenda. Mark, is there anybody out there?
There was one written one.
See, let me take a look at that one.
It's just up the board. About contact tracing, Mark?
Let's see here. Okay, yes, it was Susan Flown. Can I ask about the contact tracing and how that will be handled?
Sorry, I was just making a note. Okay, so the roadback plan does require contact tracing to be conducted by the schools. However, realistically speaking, there is a division of labor that takes place there. We, meaning the school, have been able to thus far track the students by their group or their pod or how they're organized. And then if we are notified that there is a positive test, we're able to identify and communicate directly with those students and their families who are in that pod that are affected. So if we substitute the word class for pod, we have that ability. And of course, while we recognize that there may be some mixing of classes, we can just expand that definition wider and broader. So I'm very confident that if, if, as an example, Pat Fletcher tests positive, that we will be able to identify the students that he may have come in cross-contact with. However, when we then switch to the community contact tracing, that becomes something that we're just not equipped to do. So we've been working with, I don't, it's not fully formed yet, but we've been working with both local mayors and councils and ultimately the Departments of Health to determine how that in fact would happen in the broader community. And that will be fleshed out and determined a little further. And it's a little different in both communities. River Edge has its own health department and its own health officers or adult contacts, contracts with the county to provide that. So we're still working out our little machinations associated with that.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay. May I have motion to adjourn?
Make a motion?
Stephanie, all in favor?
Claudia. Aye.
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 Okay. Time, 9:37.